Get started. Thank you. Ready?
Ready.
Okay, all right, we'll call the meeting of November 2025 Library Trustees. And we usually start by getting the consent agenda approved. If anyone had any questions or comments or motions to approve. Entertaining.
Who to approve the minutes and the consent agenda?
I'll second that.
Group. All in favor of approving the consent agenda and the minutes?
Hi.
Hi.
That's done. And our first order of business will be to do the welcome and introductions. So tonight, we have Casey.
Oh, hi, Casey.
Hi, trustees.
Hello. How's it going?
And we have the wrong name on the agenda.
Okay, I was gonna say, I see what he over here.
I think I copied from an old spreadsheet. I apologize, Casey. It is now Casey Kennedy. So.
So we have the right, we have the right person tonight.
Yeah, the right first name, but I carried it from a previous agenda or something.
And I'm glad I didn't have to try to pronounce it.
Yeah, no, it's Kennedy now.
All right, I got that.
Still me, though. I'm the administrative assistant here at the library, and I'm also a member of both our passport and notary teams. And I just wanted to start by giving kudos to our amazing passport team, Lydia, Patty, Carla, Nicole, and Kate and Michael, as well as myself. Together, we offer passport acceptance services to the community five days a week and four evenings a week. And since the library went fine free a couple of years ago, it's one of the few services that the library offers that we're actually generating income from. Last year, we were able to bring in $20,000 for the library from passport acceptance fees alone, and that's after our shipping costs. And we're on track to do the same this year. Our numbers are consistent with last year. Last month, we talked about how our library is a leader for the Library of Things collection, as well as our Access to Justice program. And we're also the first library to collaborate with the CFC across the state. But we're also recognized as a leader in our passport services. So Patty Bailey was actually asked to speak in front of the Mass Library System members this past week, advocating for other libraries to become passport acceptance facilities. And I did attend that, and she did a fabulous job. She did have a stat to share with the group that I thought was kind of striking. There are 207 passport acceptance facilities across the state of Massachusetts, and only 14 of them are libraries. And in our network, there's only three other libraries. So we're one of the four. So Patty did such a great job representing our library, and it's so great to see how other libraries will look to us as an example of this great service that we're able to offer to our community, and it also is such a great revenue generator for the library. Our notaries are also continuing to grow in demand. Last year, we were doing about 95 signatures a month, and this year, they're up to about 110. And I personally do about 50% of those myself. And uniquely, this month, my commission actually expired because I got my commission to be a notary public when I got this job, and I just passed my seven-year anniversary. So my commission did expire, and I am renewing that now, but I had to be off the schedule for the past couple of weeks. So I wanted to thank our notary team, who picked out the slack while I was off the schedule. And that's Lydia, Carla, Darshan, and Nicole, and they were able to keep it in the doing while I was off the schedule. But I did actually get sworn in on Friday, so I'll be back on the schedule by next week. So we will be doing walk-ins again. The other thing that I just quickly wanted to share, as we're coming into November, which is giving season, that we currently have three donation bins active in the library lobby, if anybody feels generous. We have our regular food pantry collection, which runs continuously. That's always open and available for people to drop off. And then we also have a bin for the Women in Business group, who's collecting new and gently-used hats, gloves, scarves through November 30th of this month. This is their 10th year of doing that with us. And we're also working with a Norwood High School student who's collecting items on behalf of HOSA, which is the Health Occupation Students of America, and they're asking for toiletry items, which will go into care packages for patients that are at Walsley Hospital. So we're always happy to support the community by coordinating these collections, and they can contact me if anybody has a bin that they wanted to set up in our library. And if you are feeling generous, please stop by and donate as you can. That's my update for this month.
Thank you, Casey.
John, you had?
Your description of your, of our presentation on passports made me think this may be one of those moments where you've got a lot of excitement and interest, but they may not know what to do next. I was thinking, would we ever consider coming up with a little "So You Want to Be a Passport Site," something intended to be brief, targeted to our fellow librarians?
That's exactly what Patty was offering with her. It's like a lunch-learn session, so it was other librarians who were learning about becoming passport acceptance facilities, and she's actually taken that on the road and done it at a couple of national conferences as well.
So what she's got is a presentation, and I was wondering whether something you could leave behind, you know, would be of any use.
I think the State Department provides that kind of material, and we would just take straight from the source.
Yeah.
Because especially with 207 and only 14 being libraries, there's a lot of other material like that.
And the best part about it is there's no cost for us to participate. So it's really just a benefit to our patrons and to the library.
It is a little tricky when you talk to people about becoming a passport spot because the State Department controls how many agents are in the specific area. So it's not necessarily an opportunity opener. If there's already saturation for a certain population area, the State Department will not give it a green light. We have to tread carefully.
You're not lucky enough.
It's good to be a leader in many ways.
And like you mentioned, for notary, you have to have a license or... Is there anything for the passport service that's required?
Is there? I don't know.
There's a large training that you do to become an agent, and then you have to recertify every year by taking the training.
Okay.
And then we get audited every two years, and someone from the State Department actually comes to interview us and check on our facility, make sure we're following the rules.
Great, I'm glad to hear.
But it's really just our time, and we have to sacrifice.
Yeah. Not really, because it's a great service.
Yeah. And we get a lot of feedback from this one.
And you made money, so that's always great, too.
And the annual recertification is intense. It is not just one of those, like, check-the-boxes. It takes a ton of hours, so, yeah, they keep us on our toes.
Well, thanks for your commitment to delivering that service.
We could talk a lot longer. There are people who, you know, under, who don't appreciate everything that Casey has responsibility and knowledge of, and they do so at their own peril. Casey is just an invaluable part of our library, as I'm sure you all know. But for anybody who is not aware, they should, Casey deserves great, great respect and our gratitude.
Absolutely. And the many things she does, every time I ask for something from another place, it seems like Casey's sort of responding to me, so thank you for that.
Happy to help.
Harris. Thank you, Casey.
So Clayton, do you want to provide any recent updates?
Sure. I mean, there's lots talked about in the packet, the wonderful presence we had at NILA just a couple of weeks ago, where you can see the list of all the presentations that staff in the library gave, myself included. That was certainly a great highlight. We've had some great concerts recently. We have a few concerts to come, so I'll segue into that in just a moment. But there was a digital summit two weeks ago at Boston College, which was really fascinating. There was a meeting last week, the annual meeting for the Massachusetts Library System, where we had a keynote that was talking about helping us increase our ability to be good advocates for our services, so that reflects, and we can talk about it a little bit later in our conversation today. And then last Thursday, this will be in next month's packet, but it's too fresh and wonderful not to share now, the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, and their 135th anniversary of their founding. These are the people who we all know are responsible for library services across the Commonwealth. And they, every 10 years, they gather to give awards, so these are really coveted awards. Some of the other, some of the recipients this year included Andrea Campbell, the Attorney General, for how she's been standing up for libraries. And there is a special hearing and the lawsuit against the federal government to protect the institute from using the library science that she brought the Commonwealth to be a party of. There's a court hearing downtown on December 4th, I believe. If you're interested in attending, let me know, and I can give you more details. So she was recognized. We had Senator Olivera was recognized and given an award for his support of libraries, including his support for the Freedom to Read bill, that is going to be made it out of rules and regs and ways and means, and will be heard on the Senate floor on Thursday. And we're really looking forward to passing that and joining the other states that have worked to pass legislation to protect librarians, to provide materials that people want. And then our very own Heath Umbright, and their work with the trans librarians across the state, were recognized for their service to libraries and an innovative job they've done to work for trans rights, which is really neat, to be able to support Heath and the other members of that organization, on Thursday in the State House, in that great monumental building. That, when I talk about highlights recently, that one is going to last for a long time. That was quite a highlight for us.
For the sake of our home audience, what's NILA?
NILA is the New England Library Association. Thank you. It's very easy to slip into acronym speak. I appreciate that, so I'll try to avoid that. I promised going to talk about upcoming events, too. The great concerts that we had, we had a couple of great ones in October, and we have two more remaining in October. We have on November 16th, Gumbo Jumbo, and Heroya Sukumato is going to be at 2:00. They've been happening at 3:00 every Sunday that they've been happening, but Heroya is coming up from New York. He's actually performed for me before. He's a great guitarist. If you haven't never seen his clips, you can find his clips on YouTube. He brings a loop pedal and does a really fun blend of acoustic-style guitar with, you know, will play, you know, he'll lay down one line and then play some on top of it, and does a combination of kind of American folk with some Japanese traditional music, and it's all very original and creative and is beautiful music. So he's the final of this Sunday concert series on November 30th. So that's what I'm looking forward to. We're also doing a, there's, you know, people should pick up the calendar. Next week, on Monday and Tuesday, we've got about 7:05 programs each night. On Monday, on the November 17th, we have Matisse at War, an author talk with Chris Graham, R. Gorm. And then we have our friend Alex Furtado, who is one, a head law librarian with the Massachusetts Trauma Law Libraries, and one of the partners that we've done a lot of work with with Access to Justice, is going to do a presentation here on LGBTQIA+ rights in Massachusetts. So not providing legal advice, but how to find legal information. There's lots more on the calendar, which people should pick up in thatness. And then people should plan to get ready. The first Friday in December, we are once again doing a book tree lighting. So Kate and an assistant in the tech services department, every year, put together a fabulous tree there across from the reference desk, and it's wonderful decorations, all homemade. And then we will light it up and have some stories to share on December 6th, Friday afternoon.
Could you clarify what lighting consists of here, because it sounds like a book burning?
Thank you for the opportunity, correct? There is not a book burning happening. It is a tree made out of books that we fit artificial lights on.
There we go.
And illuminate. That's right.
Great. That sounds like a wide range of programming for folks to be able to look into and register, and one ideally registers for the programming online.
Most are registration. The book, you know, when we do the book illuminating, that is not a registration program.
Just drop in, everyone's open for that. Great. And congratulations to Heath for getting recognized at the awards. I think every time I hear about you guys going places, you're winning awards, so it's again just a great reflection on the team and the work and the efforts that everyone puts in to get recognized like that from your peers, so congratulations. Anything else, or you want to friends of the library, and George, you've got an update?
Yeah, actually, they're meeting on this Wednesday, so they're currently planning on, obviously, looking at fundraising opportunities. But one of the things is they're looking at developing an online store of merchandise so that they can offer a wider range of items and more seasonal things, too.
Yes.
So we'll be discussing that, I think, probably in great detail on Wednesday. Lydia, there was anything else that I'm forgetting? I think that was...
Already recorded on the book side.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's about it.
So I have more to tell you next month.
Great. And in correspondence, I saw a couple of nice letters in there. I don't know, Clayton, if you'd like to share with everyone the, some write-ups, and then I think a donation?
Yes, I wanted to highlight, there's some praise. We had a couple of people who just really enjoyed some programs, including more praise for Heath, talking about truth sandwiches and the Media Wise, Be Media Wise series that Heath conducted this fall. So one of these is correspondence is about that. Another is praising Carla for some graphics and some help of the old preservation volunteers. I do want to share, last Thursday, when I was in the State House, I took some time to travel, to visit some of our senators and representatives in the State House while I was there, and I sat and was speaking with Senator Mike Rush, and he made a point of calling out our social media, which is also Carla's. So I don't have anything in writing, but he was very complimentary over work, and he watches a lot of social media, so I was, I already shared that with Carla. And then, yes, I was very excited to share that the niece of Ms. Gina L. Smith, who passed away last spring, left in her will two donations to us, both $15,000, one for our gift fund to support our fiction purchasing, and one for the literacy collection, to support the efforts of the folks who are on this floor. It was really generous to have that. I got to meet her. Her niece actually lives in upstate New York and had been traveling back and forth, and drove across that morning to just deliver the check personally to me. We had a really nice conversation, and remembering Gina's love of books and how she considered her best friend, and just had a special place in her heart for everything we did here. She'd been a member of a book group once upon a time, and so there's a few people here who have memories. But it had been a little bit of time since she was able to come in. It was really nice to be remembered.
Very generous.
And there was praise for Patty.
Yes.
Yeah, Patty's Book Club.
Also praise for Patty's book group, exactly. Yes, that was actually part of the act, some of the reports, and then she did the annual survey that she does. Yeah, she is well-loved. She's done great work, and is greatly respected by everybody up to her book group.
Great. Anything else on correspondence?
I think that covers the correspondence.
All right, so moving to all business, the first item is the AdHoc Subcommittee Met between our last meeting and now.
Two meetings, in fact.
Oh, we had two meetings. How about that? And, you know, we wanted to have some conversations around what can we do to raise some awareness, get some more information out there for people about the library, just to, you know, help promote and explain what we do a little bit more broadly for people that might not be here as frequently as some. And we have town meeting coming up, so one of the things that we're able to pull together was info sheet with a lot of details and facts that we're going to plan to distribute at town meeting. It has also some historical information about the library. Just, we're very proud of that, and the fact that we have such a good-looking and admirable library. We want to make sure people understand that it actually has quite a rich history. And thank you to George for designing and pulling it together, and John for your contributions and insights, and Clayton for, I think, getting it put together and printed. So just, we were able to do that, and we're continuing some conversations around other opportunities that we may be able to explore. But this was something we felt was probably the most, had the most urgency with town meeting coming up. We don't want to, you know, wait to be able to grow out and educate folks about what we do, so that's what we were able to come up with in between meetings.
It's really eye-catching. I like the bright colors on this side and the way it, you know, draws your eye in to the circle in the middle so that you're, you know, captures everything, you want to read all of it before you get to it. And of course, the stunning picture of the library itself, and I like the Q scan so people can look forward to, you know, and see what's up. And I like that, you know, it doesn't dwell on the fact that we need money like everybody else in the town. I like that it's, you know, all hopeful. This is very well done. You should be proud of this. This is great.
Well, I figure people are sitting at town meeting, you know, give them a lot of things to look at and navigate. Maybe we'll do a word search or crossword puzzle next time, but for now, we're just one with an infographic.
This is great.
For folks. And it doesn't, it's not limited to town meeting for distribution. Probably put some out around library and other select locations in the community to make sure folks, you know, just have a little bit more reinforcement around who we are and what we do, and all the great services that are provided.
In case those of us at town meeting get asked, how was it that Memorial Library saved Norwood $3.9 million?
I provide that number, so I'm happy to answer that question.
Please, yeah.
So if you go out to the calculator at ilovelibraries.org/calculator, there's another, ALA actually, oh, save that, this is a much cleaner URL to follow. The American Library Association has shared a calculator where you can go in and for various types of materials. So let's say how many books were left last year, how many programs were attended, and it's quite, and it breaks down all these different ways to count our value, the way you would have to pay if you didn't borrow books from the library, well, the average price for a book. And it's a bit crude, but it's several lines and several different types of materials, and it assigns a dollar of value, and you just refill in our annual statistics, and it says if people were to purchase this and not get it from a library, this is what the price tag would be.
And that's the nature of the savings.
That's the savings, is if people were to, if you wanted to go out and just buy what you get from a library, it would have cost you at least $3.9 million. Our budget was not $3.9 million.
Follow-up question. Does the calculator count the value of all the things that got lent out, or does it weight each of those by the number of people who checked them out?
It's looking, it's, for books in particular, and there's other types of items in the calculator as well, it's just saying how many times a book is lent out. So it is, it is weighing. It's not doing any, like, you know, looking, some books cost 25, and some, it's using an average price for books, which is why there's a line for books, there's a line for audiobooks. There's several different lines, and it's doing an average price.
Right, and then there's also lines for, you know, presentations, museum passes, you know, present, you know, all the programs, I mean, which...
Museum passes are a good example. If people were to, instead of, you know, they have an average price for the discount that people are getting from museum passes.
And oftentimes, when I get books, not every time, but when I print out my, when it's due to be returned, it'll say, you have saved $36.82 by getting your books from the library today. You know, if I get out a couple of books, it depends on how many books you get out, but it will tell you right there, you saved this much money today by getting your books out of the library.
Thanks to you, you all, I can envision looking rather dumb on the floor of town meeting if I get asked a question and I'm not sure.
That'd be the danger on that one.
So it's really saving the community, people that live here, is, you know, probably a little nuance on the town, because to your point, the budget would never be that much to provide all of that, and it would be up to, like, individuals, probably, in some...
But it's good, because it provides a talking point, right?
Yeah, demonstrates just about, like, literal economic value of the services provided, yeah.
And I think it's undercounting, because you think about the opportunities that those materials and others have also provided, and certainly, there have been many of our materials that are used for educational purposes and entertainment purposes, but there's plenty of people who come and do business also here. And you think about, and we count how many times the meeting rooms are used. But then you have everybody else who's just, you know, doing their business plans at a little table in the corner, and what is the impact economically on that in the community? And we can't capture that. There's a lot we don't know that's added value as well.
Yeah, for instance, when people come in and ask the reference desk, you know, the people that are working at the references, how can I, you know, how can I, you know, get this information? You know, I need help getting this information. They don't know how to extrapolate it, where to go find it, how to use the phishing ring, the...
Or the price tag.
There's no price tag for that, just how, their interactions with the staff here. There is no price tag. The literacy department, there's no price tag for that. That's huge, free, you know, all of that.
If I get asked a question, I'm going to send them over to you. That was a great pitch.
Sometimes Clayton, he's much better at talking than I am.
Anyway, certainly a good bang for its buck, right? That's kind of the bottom line, right? You know, who can't...
And free Wi-Fi.
Yeah, and free Wi-Fi, yeah, absolutely. It's cooling, and, you know, there's so many other things that's had to, we don't have the time. Sarah, did you have a question or a comment?
I was just asking if that figure included any sort of calculation for the literacy volunteers' work?
I mean, it's, it would be wrapped up in some of the program information, but I'm sure it's undercounted on this one.
Yeah.
I mean, theoretically, we'd go into the weeds and look for, you know, comparable-length tutoring that people, you know, would pay for, and, you know, multiply that by our numbers, and, you know, likewise, you know, you talk about getting help at the desk, well, what is, you know, the Geek Squad charge, or, you know, these, some other for-profit? But this, fortunately, we already have a calculator that gives us a rough estimate.
It is a rough estimate, for sure.
All right, well, excited to be able to distribute it, so.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to making lots of copies, and I'm sure it will stand out on the table on Thursday, yeah.
What people will see. And now, the next thing for new business, policy review considerations. I know there was some conversations around acceptable use and things like that. We didn't get as much detail, because I know there's still some work on drafting suggestions, so probably continue to look at that unless you have an update for us.
And that's really a placeholder to make sure that we don't let that get away from us.
And then for new business, I know there, the legislation was moving forward. I think you sent an email just this afternoon, so I don't know if you wanted to be able to provide an update on...
Sure. As we've been following what's happening with the two ebook bills in the Massachusetts State House, the Senate moved out of committee, I believe, two different bills, actually, on last Thursday, and it was announced, the Freedom to Read was announced at the award ceremony that I attended, and then I was just today doing research in the other one, and it looked like it was also called out and will be here on the Senate floor this Thursday. So the Freedom to Read is the one protecting library workers from any repercussions for lending materials that have been selected as part of our collection development process, and that's both in public libraries and in schools, where people are providing specifically, it's, libraries and library workers have been targeted by people challenging providing materials to children, as we've seen some book banning efforts across, and going beyond just banning materials, we're going after the people who've been providing access to the materials that are purchased and are backed up by, by library staff and boards. The other bill is to, which we had provided the summaries to by AI a couple of months ago, was the one to form a commission to look at ebook pricing and try to understand what can be done to improve community access to ebooks. And that is moving forward, I believe, as well. And so that will, there's several named bodies, people that will sit on this commission to do a study to figure out what in Massachusetts is a feasible way to improve public access to ebooks.
And it looks like there were some changes to the bill numbers. Should, if people wanted to reach out to their senator in support of that?
Yep, if they need additional information, they should reach out to me, and I'm happy to give you the latest with the correct bill numbers.
Okay, so there's some consolidation, I think, that...
Lots of bills were filed, and they put some together, and then give new numbers.
Okay.
Yeah. It was helpful just to sit with Senator Rush on Thursday and here, because he was in the committee that obviously has his majority whip, is the one deciding what's going to get spoken, and how their agenda will line up. And he was very optimistic about why there's a lot of people supporting these bills, feeling very positive. But that doesn't mean they don't need to hear from folks. And especially the commission, there have been, there's various people in the publishing world, there are a coalition of authors and independent publishers that are very favorable, but it has met resistance in Massachusetts to some degree, and similar bills have asked met resistance in other states from large publishers who feel like it's an overreach of government. On the flip side, people say that the government needs to be responsible with how we pay, we spend the public's dollar, so.
Well, it's, it's good to see it moving forward, and we'd be hopeful that we get some positive results, yes.
The other piece of new business that we talked about bringing was... The other piece of new business that we talked about bringing was the opportunity to weigh in on the town strategic planning process. And how, and we can table that, we can have a further conversation with Sarah Dixon, the head of the planning department. They're certainly interested in providing an opportunity either to a focus group of this body or providing a workbook where individuals could contribute ideas to this strategic planning process, which is really meant to guide the entire town of Norwood for the next 10 years. So they have copies of our strategic plan and have acknowledged that in the sessions that Lydia and I attended and are looking at incorporating pieces from that. But this is obviously going to influence our next strategic planning process as well. So I think it's in our best interest to engage in a conversation with Sarah and really spend some time chewing on it if that is something that we'll do.
I think most everyone, correct me if I'm wrong, has probably had an opportunity to look at the plan or attend one of the sessions where they did some socialization of it, right? You know, there was some post-it notes I went and got to, it was here, right? We had a great, you know, a few sessions in different places.
Of our strategic plan or the town's?
The town's strategic plan. And then, so, you know, I think it would be useful possibly to have more, again, just together talking about it and hearing about it and understanding where we may be able to provide some support or ideas or guidance or whatnot. Whether it should happen in front of the full board, I think, has that happened in the past?
Other town committees are doing, open houses are doing this kind of thing.
They have, okay, so...
And engaging in this way. I think, yeah, some other boards are in town, have been doing this.
Yeah, so given that, if people are agreeable, I mean, I'd love to have her in and to talk about it and we can be a little bit more focused on the library and the opportunities there. So I certainly would be in favor of it. I don't know, we probably don't need to vote on it, I wouldn't think.
Wouldn't hurt.
Wouldn't hurt. Could. If anyone would like to make a motion to invite Sarah to the board to...
I would move that the Board of Trustees invites her to get together with us and do an appropriate session on town plan.
Anyone want to second that?
Sure, I'll second that.
All right, thanks, George.
Feel free to edit it. I, you know, I should write these things down before I say them.
I think I get the gist. I mean, we're here to hear about the plans and then, you know, what is the implication for the library, I think would be ideal. So all in favor?
I'll schedule something with Sarah.
Great, that's terrific. I think that's the end of the new business.
I think so. I do want to celebrate. Usually at the top, I welcome any new employees, and we do have two new folks. We have Paul Malouf, who joined us as our junior custodian since we last met. And we have a new page, Timothy Kail, Kai, excuse me.
Kai.
Kai, yes, Timothy Kai. So who we've been working, we've had Timothy's old brother, James, worked for us until he went off to college this year. So we're delighted to continue in having the Kai family engaged in the library.
Great. That's awesome. And I guess the library is closed tomorrow for Veterans Day.
That's correct.
For folks at home.
Yeah, well, we close this month, we're closed on Veterans Day, and we're also closing at 5:00 on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and we'll be closed on Thursday for Thanksgiving and also on Friday.
Okay.
But otherwise, we're open every day in November.
Excellent. Did anybody have any other remarks, comments, questions they want to bring up? Jokes to tell?
You want to open that door, Sarah?
There's just one thing left to do.
I do think it's that time, isn't it?
Were there any search warrants?
We don't, yeah, we're not in these search warrants.
No, darn it.
Nope, none this, not this month or any month in my, in my memory.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. And we are adjourned. Thank you.